Hey Kirsten. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Lydia, it's good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
Hello. I'm here. Thanks for joining us.
Hello. Nice to meet you virtually.
Likewise.
Well, hello again.
Eric.
Hi.
So one of my first asks is going to be if somebody else could please share the agenda? Because I have had some security changes that have blocked my access to Google Drive.
Sure.
I'm gonna have to figure out how to use Google Drive without using my work computer. It's my only computer.
Do you know if there's a way to share? I created a PDF of it. Can I do that while I'm taking notes in the Google Drive version? Or will it start disrupting my notes?
It's not a problem.
You can just make a PDF and then have the PDF as the agenda record. That's typically what I do.
That's what I did do. It's just I wasn't sure if it would share the screen that I was viewing instead of I'll just try to pick which screen it's showing, I think, is the solution.
Okay.
We'll give a minute or two. I'm not sure if Matt and Vince are going to be able to join. Didn't hear anyone say they couldn't.
I didn't see Matt say that he could though. Find this phone number.
Can you see the agenda?
Yes, yes. And this is the PDF that you're sharing.
Yes, this is the PDF. And then I'm gonna try to pull out. You can still just see the PDF or do you see my email now?
The PDF is
Alright, cool.
I don't know Vince's cell number. I'd text him. I don't think we have a group. But I pinged Matt Greiner.
I'll send Vince a text.
Yeah, it's worth.
And then I guess we can probably just
I'll send. And then I guess.
That must have been on me. Did you guys get that whole loop?
Yeah, I thought someone else was talking and then it was just my own voice being at Goodback.
Okay.
I texted Vince.
Cool.
Well, I think we can six thirty-four, so I think we can just start and if they're able to join, they can jump on when they can. Shall we call to order?
Yes.
Thirty-four. We'll do roll call. So Kirsten, hello, I am here.
Lydia Harry.
Val Shep here.
Alright, and then we have one other person on the line. We have Jim Price, our new borough manager. And we have no citizens on the line right now.
And Mr. Greiner unfortunately had something come up at work last minute. So he did plan on them. Alright.
Alright, well, first item on our agenda here for actual discussion items is the joint multi municipal zoning project update. And my biggest update there is that I don't have one and I'm irritated by it. I reached out to them. So they're in their they're in their second of their three phases, which is called the calibration phase. So they're supposed to be building upon the outreach, the site tour, the interviews and the diagnostic review of our existing code that was done in the first phase wrapped up in October. So they're supposed to be going on with you preparing a draft rewrite. They are reviewing our reviewing our zoning map and they have done an update of that. But I'm not, it doesn't seem to be ready for distribution yet. And they haven't set any dates for what the next steps are, when the next stakeholder or when the next steering committee meeting will be, or when the next phase of public engagement will be and what that will involve. So I asked about, I saw a draft of the zoning map in December and I had a call with the consultant to talk through some things that were missing from it. So I gave them a bunch of feedback and asked them to incorporate those changes. And they did. But I reached out in early January when we came back from the holiday, that first week of January to ask about setting dates for next steps. And I did not hear back until last Friday. So I responded to Zone Co. And I know they're still working on it, but I know they're doing the draft rewrite. So this isn't a huge issue, but it is irritating. We need to have, we should have more communication from them. We should have a draft map soon that's ready for us to look at and see what the proposed changes are going to be to the zoning map. And we should have some dates that we can start talking through for when the next steering committee meeting will be and what is going to be involved in this next round of public engagement. So I responded to them yesterday and I copied Jim Price on that. This is his, yesterday was his first day. And so we'll go ahead and give him some updates right now. Since we started this project, this zoning rewrite, we do have a, we have a good consultant on board. They are highly recommended. They've done good work. They did good work on the first phase. But the project manager for this has been me in the absence of a lot of staff capacity at the borough. And moving forward, I would really like that contact to be our new borough manager. To keep on top of this a little bit more closely. And we're still trying to get this. I understand that it's a joint process too. And so I know early in January, they were meeting with Ingram to finalize some decisions on Ingram's side. And I'm sure they're hoping to schedule out the next steering committee meeting and the next round of public engagement in collaboration with both burrows. But in the meantime, it's a little irritating that we're waiting so long to get updates on that. I was hoping that by this meeting, we would have dates to talk about.
Yeah, I will absolutely take that role. And could you, Kirsten, also connect me with the point person at Ingram, just so that I have it?
Yes, that would be, that would be Sam Nucci. I'm gonna make myself a note to get that sent to you after this, after this meeting. Sam Nucci is the Ingram council president and he's been their point person on Ingram's side. We have a steering committee that was set up to be half Crafton and half Ingram. So that because there's a lot of overlap between the two. It was set up that way. It was going to be a maximum of eight people for Crafton and eight people from Ingram. So that we could have joint steering committee meetings at key points and sixteen people is not too excessive, especially since we never get everybody to come. So we can get, you know, a joint steering committee meeting, but then there's also the opportunity to break out targeted meetings or to have, you know, the first hour of the meeting be Crafton specific and the second hour of the meeting be Ingram specific as we start getting into more community specific discussions.
Kirsten, I just want to throw out there an idea that you probably thought of. You're probably gonna say next, but the timing of Jim coming on and your, let's just say responsive, responsiveness challenges here in the past couple of weeks might be a really simple thing to reach out with Sam and Jim and a contact or hey, you know, you may not be ready quite to have the schedule and all that sort of stuff yet, but how about we do a quick handoff call? To kind of set expectations and for Jim to give some backstory and get them plugged into the, you know what I mean? Kind of an easy way to have a, not the official meeting, but a quick even zoom off the books kind of a touch base to, you know, make sure that your baton is definitely past the gym, no offense to you, but right? That way you, you know, you're freed from it. You're still involved. I mean, my God, right? But you're freed from the having to manage the operational side of it as well. You know what I mean?
I'm a member of the steering committee and I certainly want to continue to be copied, but it'll be, especially as my work schedule has gotten insane. It'll be really beneficial for Jim to be more regularly on top of this because I I do not have enough capacity to be regularly monitoring outside of my day job.
Yeah, you kind of force their hand by saying, you know, we want a little unscheduled, just a meet and greet between the, what is it, one, two? Sam, Jim, you, four or five of you, whatever they have on their side, right? Just a quick, you know, and then you hand it off, but then you're gonna get from them some responsiveness around, oh yeah, we're thinking about these dates, but we're still locking it in or whatever they're gonna say, but at least it opens that channel up and then Jim can you know, drive, drive them from there.
Well, I will need to send an email that connects them more with Jim and gives Jim some more background to this, but an email was sent on Monday to them and it copied Jim. And in that email, I I introduced that we have a new borough manager and that I do want him to be the point person moving forward. I will be leaving the country on Thursday. So I'm hoping to get emails together to give you more background and more context on this, but having a Zoom call, especially since Zone Co. has not replied to my Monday email yet may not happen before Thursday. And please go ahead without me.
Cool.
Not taking calls from overseas.
When will you be back? Just so I have an idea.
February first.
Okay.
Evening. So yeah, February 2nd.
Okay.
It's not a four, four week job. What's that? What's that? That thing that everyone does in Spain? It's like a thousand miles or whatever. What's the road? Something road?
Oh, the trail. Do you mean the trail, the backpacking trail?
Yeah.
I can't think. I just heard it for the first time not too long ago too, and I can't think of the name.
Yeah, at least you know what I'm talking about. Kirsten, at least, you know, you're not, you're not off on that. Just a couple of days, February 1st.
Yeah, I'll be gone for six days. Six days or so.
Cool. Alright. Is there anything that we can do as a planning commission? Regarding the zoning, I mean, just, you know, we'll look for an update when it comes, but.
Well, one of the things that we had talked about, let me see if I can bring this up on my phone since I can't do Google Drive on my computer anymore. We had some discussions at our December meeting about what we could talk about in January. We were hoping to have some dates and a general approach from the consultant by now so that we could talk about how the planning commission could participate in that. But we could have some of that conversation anyways. Let me bring up our minutes from December. They are they are supposed to do some public engagement. And we have not really seen any of that since last August. And so I've asked them to think about what that next phase will be. What kind of, what kind of event they would like to plan? They have a a partner on their team that was on the team specifically for public engagement. So I'd like to see what kind of public engagement approach they would like to propose for Crafton. They should have that put together by now. Eric, you had talked about how you liked the idea of having a community event in the shopping plaza.
Yeah.
That's an area that was an area of particular focus for this project. That is where the Crafton Ingram border is. And we wanted to do this joint multi municipal zoning project together with Crafton and Ingram, partly so that we could collaborate on a consistent zoning approach for that parking for the shop, for the shopping plaza. So that was one of the things that you had suggested. I had suggested maybe Foster Park, which it also straddles the municipal boundaries, but is not private property, which might make it easier to have an event there. And we wanted to talk perhaps in January about what the planning commission would like to suggest that that public outreach be and how we would like to participate in it. So we can have that discussion. It's just a little bit less informed than it would be if we've gotten more next steps from our consultants by today.
Theoretically, when's the plan due?
Um.
For the initial draft by council.
She sent a timeline. I can pull that up.
I'm just thinking if we, if we delay anything that we do to decide on what the plan or how to plan it. I love the park idea, by the way, because then you don't have to ask permission from the shopping center, but
Safer.
What's that?
And it's safer than being in a parking lot.
Well, yeah, but you can say, I mean, the fire department, there's things that happen in the middle area fairly commonly, but I remember Planet Fitness had a whole store set up there when they opened. It was a big trailer they put in and getting people to come in to sign up for their, their memberships and all that sort of thing. That was, that was an interesting trailer to see parked in the middle for a month and a half, but the, the idea though, I don't think is, is terrible if we wait until next month to decide on what that might look like. But if that pushes, you know what I mean? If that pushes up against the deadline, maybe we plan on, you know, you'll probably hear something Jim in a week or so anyway, if, you know, there's, but when, when would a draft plan be do in order to kind of promote? Is that too late?
Well, this is the question because they haven't, they haven't put together what their public engagement will be. And whether they are going to do it in conjunction with a draft plan. Or if they're going to do it sooner to help get more community education as the plan is being developed and share the, you know, share what their changes are in development. This is what we had talked about last fall that we don't necessarily need to do a public event that dumps an entire text heavy document on the community. There will be a public review period once it's done before it is finalized and adopted. So there will be a chance for the community to read the entire text. But we had talked with them in the fall about how public engagement event might be better geared towards identifying the major topics, the major areas that are being changed and focusing on kind of showing what that will mean for the community and talking through the highlights of what is changing and why.
I think you just landed at the real discovery question, right? I think that makes a ton of sense. So really, if the line in the sand is the draft document and we only have one, I don't know if it's sure or not, we only have one public engagement session in the, you know, in their mindset of the agreement. I don't know what's written or not. Don't care. So if their thought is we should have that public engagement after the draft is kind of ready to answer questions. Or is it like you just described? Should it be perhaps before the draft? To gather, you know, what people might think crazy, sane, you know, grounded in reality or otherwise. That feedback might be prior to the draft being kind of semi finalized. You know what I mean? That's kind of like, is it before or after that? And whatever there's choices, why don't we do something that's the opposite, right? So if they say it's a, you know, just general blanket community input before the draft, then maybe we have a you know, a quick session like this or somehow where we say, hey, you know, this is, this is how you provide feedback. You know what I mean? Something like that.
They had structured their, their proposal in three phases, that diagnostic phase of, you know, assessing existing conditions and doing, doing a first a first look at what, identifying the things that they think are out of compliance or things that are not working for the community based on their review, their site tour and the interviews that they did with, with staff members. That phase is done. This right now is their calibration phase where they're looking at making their recommendations for what what changes they're going to make in our zoning ordinance. And then the third phase will be adjusting that based on feedback they get and getting it to a final refined product. So it makes sense to me. And I believe this is what we have all discussed within the planning commission as well back last fall was that between those phases two and three was the right place to have community engagement. They're doing their their first pass at rewriting, they're identifying what kinds of changes they're going to make. That's the right time to go take it to the community. Not by making them read the whole text document, but by highlighting major changes, discussing what it means. You know, telling people why these changes are happening. Why, why this is the recommended change? And getting input on that before they go into that final refinement third phase.
So just Kirsten, I want to bring up the map or the short Gantt chart slash timeline that she shared with you and I on, oh, or that you, or maybe it's from when she shared it in, or on Friday of last week. And that is that she mentioned a the, the calibration around the map, I guess they kind of use the map as the calibration tool. And having a date for a stakeholder committee review of the draft map in February. And then a stakeholder sign off on the calibration and draft map in March and then public engagement around the map and calibration in April. So I think it's similar to what you said, but just different in that it maybe not a draft, but just a focus on the map and the calibration piece. And stakeholder engagement on, by April.
What was the March date? Could you repeat that? Sorry?
Yeah, it didn't say. It didn't say, but it just said in March have a stakeholder at some point in March have a stakeholder sign up on the caliber, calibration and the draft map. And that's the, I guess, is what you're calling the steering. She's calling the stakeholder group, but I think she's calling it the steer. I mean, she's calling it stakeholder group and you're calling it the steering committee. Is that same? Do you think that's one of the same?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like that their goal is to get a map and do public outreach around that map.
So they're thinking it'll be available for the steering committee in February. Who, who was it shared with? When you reviewed in December, Kirsten, council, the council members or just you, since you've been the project manager?
It was just shared with me. And it had, it was kind of a first look. They, they had a lot of questions about things they weren't sure about. And so we had a call talking through that and they they weren't done with it. So it wasn't shared beyond that. They were supposed to go and finish it once I addressed their questions. And then I was expecting to have it early January and it was sent last Friday. So I think I think they're moving a little slower than I was expecting. And we'll need to we'll need to be on them a little bit more regularly to make sure that they move forward and start scheduling these next steps. So glad that we've got Jim to keep more regular pressure and have a staff, Crafton Borough staff member able to follow up on this.
Kirsten, can you send me the map too? I didn't, I didn't get a copy of it. And should we have, should everybody else in planning commission get the current version of it?
That's what I don't know. I had asked her in early January when this could be shared, when it was ready to be shared. And as I'm not, and she sent it on Friday asking if we could talk about it. I'm not sure if that means that it's ready to release or if they still have questions they're working through. I could certainly send it to everyone on the planning commission, but I didn't yet because I wasn't, I didn't have any answer from them about what, how, what the status of it was. But that, that was a question that I'd asked in early January. I wanted to know, when can this be shared externally? When, when is it going to be ready for planning commission and for a steering committee review?
Can, can I just add one completely rabbit hole piece of minutia? Jim, you and I looked at this, the map from Gateway that was at the coffee shop event.
Yeah.
Kirsten. I live on Belvedere. It has Belvedere as a contiguous continuous street. That goes down the Crafton. It has the old paper streets on it.
Yeah, I actually, I spoke with Gateway about that and with Doug about that. I was at Gateway today. And really that was meant that map is. And that, and I was curious about that too, but. That map and all the GIS maps that are designed, really designed for sewers and, you know, for other things as far as. Those maps were concerned that there are a lot of paper streets on those maps. That aren't going to be identified because that's not not the way that that program. Will identify things. And I used to be a GIS programmer and I was pretty sure of that. So. I don't know that there's a need to change that map, but when we do a map for the public. Or for the or for the a plan that we should get those paper streets off of that map.
So that that's where I was going is as the as the zoning map becomes in the public consumption. And you have a lot of streets that people have never walked on because they're just on paper. Then they're gonna, you know what I mean? The minds are blown and then there's, there's, there's energy that's spent on this negative, like this is all wrong. As opposed to, you know, focusing on, oh, this is the park. That is the sled riding hill. There's no street that goes down this lettering hill, you know, that that sort of stuff just may, I I'd hope that. That we're not, they're not doing, you know what I mean? That zoning work is not being do done around boundaries. Streets that are non-existent. And then the ancillary kind of kind of public confusion pointers. It's kind of twofold. Sort of, but I don't know how many paper streets there really are beyond the couple that we were looking at. Yeah, I would imagine it might be a lot.
There are quite a few.
There are some through the parking lot too, or through the shopping plaza area also that are not. Not accurate.
Does it? Does the consultant know that is my question?
My guess is that they deal with that all the time. My guess is that the consultant is quite aware. I know it was that way when I was in. And a lot I've reviewed comp plans and zoning ordinances from probably fifty different municipalities and. I've, most of them have paper streets on their zoning maps. But then I'm not worried about it. Thank you.
Of course, there. A a lot of those were flagged early on during the kickoff and the site tour. Gave them a markup of the map that they indicated a lot of the streets that were incorrect on the on the borough's GIS, but. It does have somewhat of a limited impact on them because they're not zoning streets. They're only zoning private parcels. And so if the streets are shown incorrectly. Unless it's a. Unless it's a parcel to be zoned, if it's still reserved right of way, that's not something that they're going to. Put into a zone.
Yeah, and I and I have another concern that we have to be careful of if we get rid of the paper streets and that is. If people have a map that shows their properties budding up against each other and there should be a paper street there. That they'll automatically assume that they own that property and that, you know, that they use that map to say, oh, look, see, this map says that I own. To the middle of this line where it's reality is they probably don't, you know, unless they've played, unless they've officially claimed. So. That is one thing that we might want to be careful about if we, you know, if if we do mark them. That we mark them in a way that doesn't look like it's we give, we've divided the street up and given it to both parcels. That's just a thought.
So just so unclear, we're. Eric's asking if paper streets can be omitted, but the guidance you're suggesting is keep them, but indicate clearly. That they don't exist as proper streets.
That would probably be the best, like maybe just put hash marks on them or something like. Just indicate some way that they're still a paper street on the map. The property lines are still the property lines. Now we're just telling you that this street doesn't exist or this street isn't a through street.
Okay.
This right of way, right, which the borough still has, is not an actual street, maintained road at this point, right? That would be the. Thing that can back. Sorry, that seems like a can of worms.
So I have a question for those that are here. I have no issues forwarding that draft map. To you all, if you'd like to weigh in on it. I have asked, I I had held on it initially because I had asked. For their input on whether they, whether it was ready to share or whether there was anything to wait for, but since that hasn't. Been immediately addressed. If you would like to have it forwarded to the planning commission, I'm happy to do that. And you all can weigh in on it and when we get more clarification on.
Kirsten, I I mean, put it on them, right? You're going out of town in like a matter of hours, you know, it's a lot. Last thing you need to do, because what I'll say is maybe we not only put it on them. But Lydia, you'll probably jump on this with me maybe, but you know, we say, hey, can the consultant send to us a before and current, right? You know, as a comparison, not just the map, but like together, you know what I mean? One PDF or whatever. That has the before and one is the current, then then it's not on you at all. You know what I mean? It's just an ask of somebody to either do or not do, but it's not something you have to worry about. You know what I'm saying?
So you're you're saying instead of Kirsten sending us the map that they provided. She would send an email to the consultant just requesting that they forward the. Pre and the exist and and the current.
Minute it's ready to share. I'm gonna be out of town a couple of days. Here, send this out to Jim. Jim can distribute it to the planning commissioner, you know, there you go. And whoever and other relevant parties, right? You know, whatever you, but.
I I would like to see when that gets shared out. I would like to see it paired with a description of what each of the districts are. Because even for me, when I see the map itself, I can see what. I can see what they're planning to change in terms of what parcel goes in what district. But they haven't shown yet what they're planning to change about the regulations in those districts. And that, that is what I had asked for in early January because I I. I feel like it's it's of limited value to share the updated map itself. If it's not also paired with some description about what is changing about those districts.
You're right.
I probably should have led with that earlier. So that that is what I was waiting on before sending it on. But that being said, I I can ask. That they go ahead and share the before and the current version, the existing and then the current version with. With the planning commission so that you all can look at it. Review it, share your initial thoughts and we can get planning commission, you know, planning commission feedback back to them before they. Before they take it to the next level.
Yeah, I'm I'm always looking for people to break it down in elementary terms, just so I can, you know, actually pretend to know something, but. I mean, the three things that were just described before, during, and then your little. You know, really important analysis of, hey, this is kind of why or the the context, right? That what you were describing in these contexts. So if we had a before, you know, proposed after or, you know, draft after. And then a little bit of the context to guide the way, boy, that'd be super helpful to understand what this all means. I mean, that's awesome. That'd be great.
I just don't know if they have that context yet. That's what I requested for the next steering committee meeting. And that steering committee meeting hasn't even been scheduled yet. So I'm not sure when they're going to have that ready. But, you know, I can ask them for it this week and see how quickly they're able to send something over that has that.
Is there a way to just ask? I mean, we have a, we have meetings monthly, so. We could ask, give them three weeks notice, basically saying we'd like, planning commission would like to discuss. The map and the context if possible, next meeting. And give them three weeks to get it to us.
So.
Can certainly do that. We also had talked about having them meet with the planning commission. And we've revisited this occasionally every few months, you know, occasionally. And we've kind of delayed it because. Planning commission had expressed more interest in having that meeting occur when there's a little bit more to respond to. Right. But I think this is a good time to come back to it. Would you like to have them at a planning commission meeting to review that draft?
You just came up with the whole answer between the two of you. That's normal, but you. You give them four weeks. To put context to the before and the then current, right? And meet with us next month this time to talk about it. Now, is it a joint meeting next month? No.
No, the joint meeting will be in March.
So it wouldn't be a distraction, you know what I mean? We could use this meeting, give them four weeks, right? And that would be, that would be great. And if we would like, if we would like, we can do a little more than we normally do, which I don't really do much. To promote other people, whether from council or from the community or Mars. To come to the plan commission meeting to hear a little bit about that. Right?
Not sure I'm comfortable with Martians attending.
Yeah, you know. Does that work?
Is that something that you guys would like to have the consultant attend the February meeting and do? Kind of a presentation and and Q and A and maybe work session to go through what they've done and get planning commission feedback at the February meeting?
Seems like that would check all the boxes, but yeah, I don't want to influence. Go ahead, Jim, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I I want to add that I think it might be, that might be a good suggestion too, because maybe one of the reasons they're. Not writing those descriptions up yet is they wanna, they don't want to put things in writing before they've clarified. You know, if the map is where they're starting and they don't want to get into the details of the differences between then and now because maybe they haven't. Determined because maybe that's part of the public engagement or, or you know, or whatnot. So they don't want to do the then and now yet officially. So maybe having them just come and report out on it might be more comfortable for them anyway of like what, you know, what they're thinking. And and then they can, you know, do that verbally as opposed to putting a bunch of things in writing that maybe people aren't going to agree with.
And I think you could actually ask so that it's kind of billed that way, not that we get attendees, but. An unofficial, you know what I mean? Unofficial ideation ceremony, right? Ideation meeting around. You know, the the current review of the map and what it could look like and what proposed changes maybe. Before this moves into the semifinal, you know. Or qualifiers you can put in one sentence, but yeah, something like that would be sensible. Checks all the boxes for me because then I have a better idea, you know. Why would anybody be upset about this? You know, to me, it's very straightforward, very, you know, technocratic, but. I don't know. I'm sure somebody's gonna pitch fit about something. So the more we can do to educate the community about why this makes a. Ton of sense, then, you know, we might head something off at the pass.
Lydia, what do you think? Is this the kind of engagement that you want? Right? They mean, they owe public engagement, but they also had promised a work session with the planning commission.
Right. I think my only reservation is just that. We've only budgeted basically for one planning commission specific meeting, I think in each borough. So this would be, you know, this would be our chance. I think my reluctance is like, if they don't have it very well developed. We wouldn't have an opportunity to comment on all of it to them directly, although I'm sure we'll. Discuss and provide recommendations about the plan at large to council as this moves forward. And there's going to be other opportunities like the community public engagement that we could show up to and provide comments, so. I don't think it's that big of a deal to have us be kind of first and we're. Maybe better suited to being first just because we're more familiar with these topics than. The community at large, maybe so maybe we'll have valuable feedback for them. In the in the initial stages and they'll refine it for when they're presenting to the steering committee and to the community.
Makes so much sense.
So I I guess, long story short, I'm fine with it. Do you want? Would that request come from Jim? Do you want me to take that on since you're leaving the country? Just to assign the action item, the request for the consultant to come next meeting?
I'll email them right after this meeting.
Okay.
Can I just just walk on what Lydia just said? Since it's an email that's based off of qualifiers qualifying qualification. I think that adding that other thing to it is a is a really good point, like. You know, will you commit to this? And will you commit to this? Like. Getting an email the day of or even worse, going to the meeting where it's not what we thought we were asking for, which is a before. A then current and a little bit of description around it to ideate and think and do those things. If they're unable to do that at that point, I wouldn't want to squander our session that we have on the books, you know what I mean? We're paid for it, you know? I would hate to squander it for them to show up and say like, yeah, well, this is how these things work and have have them give us something trite and oblivious to. You know, what what's actually going on with the Crafton plan. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I I agree with that actually and. When when, having been through a zoning rewrite when I was at my previous municipal job. The it is much more involved once you get into all the language and 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 much more, you know, challenging from a. You know, talking about it in a session. So I agree with that. If it's better, I didn't realize that we only had one, what I said, that sounds like a good idea. So I I. I concur that that might be a better better use of their one meeting if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna have it. Further along in the process where it's much more detailed.
I think we, and this is where I I'm, I want them to. Find a time to talk about this and she did, she did suggest. Talking this week or next and I I wrote on Monday that I'm leaving on Thursday. I suggested a few times today and tomorrow and I haven't heard back. So if I don't get a chance to talk to. To Zone Co. before I leave, then it will be, you know, hopefully Jim will be able to talk to them while I'm gone and I. Get him some more context to this now that he's here with Crafton before I leave. I, we had talked about having them do one planning commission meeting, but I'm very comfortable pushing them to do more, to do two. They had put public engagement in their scope. In a not incredibly defined way, they gave some examples for types of public engagement they would do and they told us that they would. They would come up with a plan that fit the community and the context to craft in. They had offered in their proposal that that could be meetings with the planning commission, a community event. Presentations to council, et cetera. And obviously it was stated they couldn't do everything, but it would be tailored to fit the budget to what. What we, which methods and techniques we preferred. It's been pretty slim so far, so I'm very comfortable pushing them to do two planning commission sessions.
Sounds good.
That'd be great.
And Jim can back us up on that. I mean, he talks to them to push for two planning commission sessions. I think if we, I can ask them to submit this before and after and some description. By within the next three weeks, so we we know we'll have it in hand. For the planning commission meeting comes around and then we can ask them to attend that meeting. And have a, they can give a presentation of it. Talk through it and then do some Q and A and open discussion with planning commission members on the line.
Great. Thank you.
So dates wise, our next planning commission meeting for February will be February twenty eighth. I will be traveling that day. Would you guys like to keep it that day? Or would you like to talk about another potential date? I may still be able to join. But I'm I'm not sure. I I can't know yet. I I will be traveling that day for sure. And I don't know the exact times.
Do.
I'm not not answering. I'm looking up ten different calendars.
Do we want? To ask them for the information, but then invite them to the March joint meeting instead? That way you don't. Miss it potentially and. That way you don't miss it potentially and. Man, I could do a different day, I just, Vince and and Matt aren't here to answer for their schedules. And it may, maybe they would view attending the joint meeting as beneficial. Because they would present to both groups at the same time and then maybe they wouldn't have any problem with ha- having a second meeting. Since the first one essentially hit two birds with one stone. Ingram hasn't had a ton of updates to provide at the joint meetings lately, so I don't know. It, I don't think it would be taking away much from the agenda.
To have them. Have a very light. They have a very light planning commission right now anyways.
I can offer Monday, mu- keep Tuesday or offer Monday that that week, just so you know.
I'm also available the twenty seventh.
Yeah.
Let's keep Tuesday. Um, and I'll just send out. Send out this um message to the rest of the planning commission to ask about availability that day. Um, since Vince and Matt aren't here, see if that that twenty eighth works for them.
Cool.
I'll be in Texas and it's an hour behind. I'll have to see closer to that time I can, how I can arrange it to be online.
Okay.
But I'm also on the steering committee, so if if I have less involvement at that meeting, um, I'm okay with that. I think it's more important that the rest of you have the chance to talk with the consultant and review what they've done and ask your questions and give your input.
Yeah, let's let's hope it's redundant for you anyway. Alright.
I'm going into a very busy spring, so.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Um, my time's going to be very, very limited.
Yep. All right, you want to move on? We we have a plan? Anything that's left unfettered?
Uh, I'm good to move on.
Okay. Well, the other um, the other discussion item under that zoning project update is that um, there was a community event on January fourteenth. That was um, was not actually community hosted, it was hosted by the Fig Tree Cafe, but they called it Community Resource Fair. And um, myself and Eric both attended that day. There were um informational materials about the the zoning process so far. There were copies of the executive summary of the diagnostic report that were there. There were um, there was at least one full printout of the entire diagnostic report. And there were a few copies of the current zoning map out on a table. And during the time I was there, not a single person asked any questions about it. Um, but Eric, you took over after I left. Did you have any? We we did have a presence there, we had materials, we were available for for community questions and do you want to fill in if you had any discussions?
We held court there, it was lovely. We had Joe Apple from the school board, we had Lou Ryan. We had a a a a a whole smattering of 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 citizens, Aaron from council. We we had a, yeah, we had a, we had a great time. We were definitely the 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 boisterous table, right? A lot of it was talking about, hey, oh, you need county, should read plan, gotta rethrive, right? You know, that's the, that's the foundation of it all. Um, there was uh, talk about the, we're just talking about the paper streets and just, you know, what does that mean? What the heck is a paper street, right? Um, there was some, there was, I think it was, it was good. I mean, it was, it was, it was soup to nuts, you know, we talked about. You know, development, what does development look like and, you know, what are the blockers to development? You know, some of those things like, oh, sewer pipes really do help with development, right? We talked about the stormwater separation, it was, I think it was uh, it was good.
So people asked you questions? You had had conversations about the zoning project?
Absolutely. Well, not that, not really an understanding of what is zoning, right? I, you know, I will, I will say that because I don't think that I can go deep into explain, like, how do we go about deciding? The why, I talk more about the bureaucratic side of it, which is the, the, the why. On that side, because, you know, councils for years and decades on end will make laws and, you know, they'll reference. You know, they'll, they'll codify things that then reference things that have been deleted, that then reference things that don't exist. That, you know, it just, it just becomes kind of befuddling. So having a reset to get everything back together again is a reason to do this every ten years or so. And when you're trying to encourage development, the last thing that you want is a snafu because of a technicality of like, oh, we have an old law. That says you can't do that here, right? Um, so that's about all I could do to explain it. How do I do?
Oh, you did great.
I mean, is there more?
Thank you. Sorry. I was just gonna thank you, all three of you for going to that, that event. I think stuff like that's really important to engage the community.
Vince also went briefly, he was, he was arriving as I left. It's my daughter's birthday, so I couldn't stay the whole time. But um, I think Vince went briefly and Eric, you stayed until the end, right?
Yeah.
So thank you.
Five minutes up, yeah. Um, yeah, I, yeah, I'm curious, it's one of the things that I have curiosity about just in this whole process is. So the decision for change or the recommendation for change or the basis of change, right? When something does change, is it because it was, you know, there were references to codifying this area now as 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 residential? That was commercial, vice versa, you know, is like, what what drives that, you know? I'm I'm curious as to what the the rationale is for decisions will be, you know, you know what I mean? Does that make sense? Or am I, am I just being woefully like oversimplistic?
It makes sense, but it's also a pretty wide question, so I think this is exactly what we want during. This is exactly what we want that our consultant to be putting together for their next steering committee meeting. And then definitely for like maybe kind of testing it out with the steering committee and then taking in the next round of of public engagement. They put together, this is what we want for them to prepare for the community.
Cool.
Okay, well, if that wraps up our our zoning project update, then the next item on here was the update on the official map. We talked about this a bit in December, um, Eric, and you had said that you were going to take this on as an action item. And we could take as a next step, um, view and annotate a map of trails and paths and sidewalks. I'm not sure if you're ready to do that at this meeting, um, or if you wanted to prepare that for another meeting. But this was something that we had discussed in December as an action item that you were going to move forward.
Oh, I thought that we already had gone over that. Um, hold on one second. Cause I have it up, I, yeah, I don't have it up, that's my problem. I'll pull it up. So.
I'm gonna bring the meeting notes back up again, but we we have talked about this on and off and in December, we gave an update. I had um consulted with our engineers and with the solicitor. We can proceed with preparing a map of trails and recommended walking connections without requiring any kind of engineer or consultant. We can put our own map together. Um, if we do want to show trails that we don't own, we just need to reach out to those entities and make sure that they. Give us written permission to include them on our borough map of walking trails. Uh, the two major ones that we've been discussing are the uh, Shartiers, the Creekside Trail, which is partly owned by the um, Army Corps of Engineers. So we, they allow people to walk on it, but we, if we want to put it on a map, we need to get that um agreement in writing. And then the other one was the um, part of it is is controlled by the conservancy and we got a contact for that as well. And Eric, you had taken on a, as an action item to get in touch with that contact and to prepare a a Google map. That we could annotate.
Yeah, so I don't have the contact and maybe you guys can can tell me about this. Um, because that contact has been identifiably impossible, but here, can I share my screen?
Yeah, but can I clarify one thing first? Cause I think I'm misunderstanding. Um, usually an official map is not to list out trails and other things. And with with the idea of putting out for public to be used um, to locate trails. The idea behind an official map is to, for future land use, what exists now and what the borough would potentially own. Or want to use as public space in the future if it's available for purchase or for use. So you don't necessarily, it, and I'm not a hundred percent sure about this, that, but this is my limited understanding of an official map. Is it's a future land use plan and we can put land on it that we don't own. Or that we don't have permission to use right now, um, without any permissions, because we're not suggesting that people use it. For trails now, but more so for potential use in the future. But.
Yeah, Jim, to give you a bit of background here, we we've been talking about wanting this map of of walking trails and and. Phil Lavassor, who was a council member until he moved away in December. Um, hit upon this idea of having an official map, which is a, a proper item that has regulations. Under the the Pennsylvania municipal code. Um, we had even asked our zoning consultant if that's something that could be added to that scope and it was not something that they. Were ready to do. Um, but in discussions with this planning commission where the idea originated anyways. Um, we've really been talking more about a map that would show walking connections and walking trails. And so we could go about this in a very formal way of having a consultant prepare an official map for us. But we don't, in consulting with the solicitor, we don't have to go that route. If all we want is a map of walking trails that we would like to promote on the borough website. We do have to make sure that we are not identifying anything that we don't own without written permission. We have to be careful about identifying what's public, what's official, what's officially designated as a a borough trail and what is not. But um, because we have a few trails that we don't own, but that are very, you know, are are allowed to be used for walking. We just have to make sure we. Cross our Ts and dot our Is, get that in writing and we can go ahead and put this map together essentially on our own. Or put it together in a casual way and have have our borough engineers put it on the a formal, put it into the formal GIS format. Um, that was our solicitor's input that we we discussed in December. If if what we want is what Eric has been discussing, a a map that identifies recommended walking trails. And shows walking loops potentially with um, names given to those or distances assigned to those. Like this loop is one point one miles. Um. We don't need a unofficial map for that, we don't need a consultant for that, we can put that together ourselves. So that was where we ended up with our conversation in December and. Um, Eric, I did have a contact and I thought it had been shared and I'll look for it again and and get it shared with you again.
Yeah, so you put it, it was like the October notes, um, and I looked up that person on Google. And found out that they were a planning commissioner in Carnegie. And I found Carnegie slash Heidelberg's joint um, bike trail kind of mapping. And I don't know how old it is, but it's pretty cool. I mean, you know, it's, it's like, hey, they're thinking, they're thinking about things that I want people to be thinking about, but that was pretty cool. Um, so um, I can do that, but I don't have like any sort of official. This was like when I was basically gold calling the conservancy for a contact, an AOL address and the, you know, whatever, whatever it was. The lady that lived next to what's his names, um, that that was like all I had to go on, but this is a bona fide person we can reach out to, but I. Is that okay?
Well, the name was Tim Volks and I think what we'd said in December was that. Um, we should reach out to him. And I think, and I guess you had reached out to him, but there's nothing to put into writing. We, we, we can go ahead and put together the draft map that we want and show what what paths we would like to include on it. And then have the borough manager and or the solicitor reach out formally to get them to approve it.
Okay, so the.
It which seems like a more, I guess, at that point, we we would be reaching out with a specific ask and something. Where we can show what we want them to agree to, rather than just reaching out in advance and saying, we want your approval. And we have nothing to put in front of them to show.
Make, makes sense. Um, so here's, here's what I want to make sure. So we have um, the, the, this is not something we need to worry about with them. Because this is a Crafton right of way in the paper street. So this is uh, Sakai, this is Fig Tree and this is coming down to the West Busway, right? So we don't need anybody's anything for this.
We don't own all of it.
I need to caution on that one, because we are, we definitely do not want that on a map that is in the public eye right now. Or because we are, we're making an offer, again, we've already made an offer to buy that land. Um, and we're making another offer to buy that land. Um, in fact, I will be doing that this week, so um. We should be careful about putting it up, careful until we figure out where that's at, where I'm, I'm talking to Lou Ryan about. The council of our, has already approved it, a purchase for fifty five thousand and some other, uh, and another stipulation. So anyway, just throwing that out there.
Some of that we own and some of that we don't and some of the property that Jim is referring to is. Adjacent to what is the current trail and would allow us to expand on it, but it is, it is not just as simple as. We already own all of it.
I thought we owned the right of way.
We own part of it and um, part of it goes across um, um, an abandoned property that is owned by someone who's dead.
So when I look at this and I, you know, the paper streets, all sort of thing, when I think of a a paper street, I think that. Crafton has the right of way through there.
Well, that's true, but paper streets also have a stipulation where if somebody has been using it for more than twenty years. They can claim ownership of it.
Okay.
And, and if that's been used, I know it's not, I know it's not built upon or used, but so I just. I don't know if there's any, been any process with that and and Pierce didn't sound like you know more than I do, but as far as paper streets are concerned, if someone actually uses a paper street. For storage or for building on or whatever and they, no one contests it for more than twenty years, they take over ownership if they want to claim it.
It's used as a trail.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, you you can say that for for decades too, you got more than twenty years of people who vouch for that. Um, alright, so that's one that I guess needs some exploration and discovery. Um, the next one um, is the Corps of Engineers. So the Corps of Engineers um, up and down the countryside always let you walk on their levees and dikes and whatever they do to have trails on top. It, it seems like it's a no brainer that, but we have not um, figured out. What those simple steps, not that they would ever be simple, life would be so amazing if things were simple. But what are those um, defined steps to get from point A to point B? Meaning that the Crafton Borough is in receipt of a declaration of the Army Corps of Engineers to say that you as a municipality can have your people work. Well, walk here with no liability to the Army Corps of Engineers or whatever they say in set letters.
But I think what I'm saying, Eric, is that if we want to make that ask, we, we can start with putting together the map. That we want first and identifying what we would like on it and then the solicitor will get the agreements that are needed.
Right, and this is a map, that's what I'm saying. The next one is um, the the Dennis Trail or the Creekside Trail. So this picks up behind the new building uh, here on De Soto, right? It picks up behind there and it goes down to, again, more paper streets. There is no Xavier, there is really not much of a Bell's Run, but this street here where they just did all the sewer work, right? That is kind of a street, it's more defined than a paper street is, all intents and purposes, especially after they just plowed through it. And put a bunch of sewer pipes in the ground, but this would be, you know, I don't know, this is um, something that needs. Needs to be accessed or is that Corps of Engineers? I don't know who this is, right? I don't know who that is.
But again, Eric, this is what we talked about in December and the next step isn't to continue questioning who owns it. It's, it's to identify what you want on the map and then we'll talk with the solicitor. What, I thought that's what you, you wanted to work through, you had ideas for things you wanted to add, you wanted to show continuous loops?
Well, the, the question is, e- everything else is a street, right?
Cause these things are already on Google Maps, wh- what else did you? Cause these things are already on Google Maps, what else did you? What else did you want?
These four things are not here, and that's what I'm saying is, do we have the? You know, that's it, that's the ask.
That's all, that's all you want?
Yeah. Do we have permission to, you know, because Miss Mary puts it on the billboard down, down uh, by the 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 the. Uh, mini golf, um, go walk the trail, go sled ride on the sledding hill. Um, as if Crafton has permission to do both, but we only have permission to do one, not not, you know, not both. That that's all I'm saying, like the Creekside Trail, like how how do we just say that that's okay? And the Dennis Trail, how do we say it's okay? And then this, and then this, that those are the, those are the, those are the holes.
So it sounded like at one point tonight, and and this is kind of what I'm hearing, um. Kirsten, that maybe you mentioned at the beginning, what you were thinking that this would be a walking map. Of possible loops throughout the entire community, like other sidewalks and nat- natural. Walking loops and whatnot throughout the community, is is that what you were thinking? Um. For public consumption, once you get approvals of those things. Or because another thing you had mentioned, you had mentioned biking trails and and or maybe Eric, you had mentioned that. But you could also, you know, Bike Pittsburgh already makes a map of Crafton. Because it's surrounded by Pittsburgh and is included in Pittsburgh, so Bike Pittsburgh has all the bike trails mapped out in Crafton as well.
So we don't have any bike trails, so.
Well, bike safe.
Empty map.
Yeah, bike safe, biker, a bike safe tra- uh, roadways is what they've met, so. It's not ideal, I mean, it's not ideal, as a biker, I'd much rather have protected bike lanes, but you know, that's not the reality.
I'm gonna defer to Eric, because this is, this has been his, his um, thing that he's been proposing and pushing, so I don't, I don't want to misconstrue it. That's what I heard from you, Eric, I I thought you were looking for something that would identify. Walking loops and give them things like, uh, you know, a distance. How long it might take to walk that loop and identify complete loops, so in places where the trails don't connect, identify where you should be walking. Um, but this was. That is only what I understood you to mean, this this has kind of been your. Your initiative, so I'm gonna let you describe where you.
No, totally, and and so wh- what I'm, what I'm saying to you is. Um, sure, that's awesome, but what a waste of time if we don't have access to the. The core, um, you know, green space connectors that are there. Right, none none of the rest of this. None of the rest of this, I mean, I could argue the trolley trail, none of the rest of this is green. You know, this is the section that is green and this is a section that, you know, I know that I can tell my neighbor to take their dog and walk up to. You know, your house on the street, and that's totally fine. But if I tell my neighbor to take the creek trail, um, are they allowed to for real?
What do you see the point of this map being then, though, because that people walk on that trail all the time, so putting it on a map doesn't make it. Easier to walk on.
The people who walk on it are in a little tight knit club who know about it. What I'm saying is, if you have these things in place, then you can do, well, here. I just brought up, Jim has a great point, right? So look at the overlay here. This is your Bike Pittsburgh, right? And when you look at Bike Pittsburgh, none none of that is represented here, right? So this whole, that, you know, they come right by, but they don't know that, oh, you have a nice green loop that goes down.
That loop is not bikeable, they wouldn't put it on their map.
Well.
It it would, it doesn't meet the requirements for bike trail.
My point is 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 still the same, there there's no way, there's there's no point in. And draw, you know, yes, we can draw a happy little loop around here to connect all of it. But when you look at it, you can kind of see how it can connect based off of maybe where you live. But the point is, why do any of it? Unless we have permission to tell people it's okay to work, but. What I'm hearing is, it doesn't matter, because people walk on it, it's already in the public domain, that seems like trespassing to me. My experience with people, when I tell them about starting here, specifically and finishing here. Is, oh, God, I'd never do that, because I don't know if you're allowed to be on that land.
I mean, I. Maybe you're just. Maybe I just haven't understood what your. What your goal here is, Eric, you kind of need to clarify for us what you're trying to get out of this, it doesn't sound now like what you want. Is a map at all, what you want is for. Is for council to pursue getting formal agreements. To utilize the.
That has always been the case, the Corps of Engineers and the Conservancy to have their permission. For us to say, hey, this is a great idea, then we can draw all the maps in the world. I mean, that's, you know, it takes takes thirty minutes to put something like this together to connect all of it. But it's, my point is, it's it's moot unless. We actually have the ability to say that, you know, here, starting in Idwood and finishing at the sled riding hill. Are you allowed to do that? That's it.
So what you want to do is you want to. Make a recommendation to council to seek formal agreements to use those trails.
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Many times, yes.
So make that request.
Motion for what you just said.
Okay, so Eric has made.
I need, I need it again for the notes.
Eric has made a motion to request. That council seek written. Documented approval.
Hmm.
For. Pedestrian use. Of the. Creekside Trail.
From the Conservancy and the Creekside Trail from the Army Corps of Engineers. And, uh, I don't know, does this street have a name, the Dentist Trail, does it have a name? Uh. The Chartiers Avenue Paper Street, right, that's what that would be, from the Borough of Crafton.
I, well, I I would say, I I would tell Eric, I would not recommend asking for that while we're in a.
We'll strike the Chartiers Paper Street for the time being until said real estate matters are disclosed formally.
Yeah. Even though the paper street might be ours, I just would rather.
It makes perfect, it makes, it makes perfect sense, the Corps of Engineers is gonna take a month of Sundays to identify and respond. And the Conservancy is Jim DeRoss or whatever you said that name was. Um, and I don't even know how to, you know, go about formally making an ask there, right, that's it.
It was Tim Volk, and I I reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers last fall and I never got a response, and I. Met with Dan DZ and asked for them to help connect, and they dug around for a contact and never found one.
I have, I have numerous, I have numerous contacts at Army Corps that I can connect with who are planners, so I can. I can connect to them.
In November, I talked with Rick Minsterman, I saw him at a conference, and he said that. Army Corps is not really the people that we should be going to, it's the Chartiers Valley Flood Control Authority. Who actually controls the portion of the trail along the creek that the levee is under.
Oh, they just built it, but it's their management of it, maybe, yeah.
So. I sent, I sent that in an email in November, I can forward this to you, Jim.
Okay.
Um, but. I don't know, I don't have a contact for them directly, but maybe Rick does.
I'm sure I can get one from Carnegie or one of the other boroughs as well, if 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 we don't have one. And I can also, I've already looked at most of the properties along there, I think there are some other properties tucked in there that may need to get approval from. Uh. Along the, along the creek there, but it smaller properties, but I'll double check, um. There's a lot of properties down there that from eighteen seventy-five that have not. I'm sure not been alive for seventy or eighty years, but.
We had this included as a recommendation in that Parks Master Plan last year. And a grant was sought to do a trail. A trail planning project that would include. Pursuing, putting the effort into pursue and and. Figure out all of those ownership issues and try to acquire ownership along the way where we can, and we found out last. Last month or within the past few weeks, we found out recently that we did not get that grant, so we'll have to try again this year to get trail planning funds.
I think they, I think the new version of that grant was, I I think I got an email, um, before I started. Um, about that grant or a similar grant being available right now or or being open very soon, so. I can look into that as well.
Okay, so I just sent that to Jim and we saw the motion on the table, I'm gonna second it.
Awesome.
All right. All in favor, um.
Hi.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
I'm not a voting member of the Planning Commission, so I don't think, right, no.
No.
No, just want to make sure.
Now, and Jim, you can probably proceed with a lot of this without. Meeting council either, but we can, you know, forward it to council and then it'll be, it'll be shared with you, and if we need it on the council agenda. We can put it on the council agenda, but this will have no opposition whatsoever, it was already discussed in the Parks Plan last year, it was already. Uh, one of the initiatives we wanted to pursue, we had, it was. It was just bundled into a planning effort. To do this while also trying to get. Trying to acquire some of the missing parcels and do a planning process to. Do a formal, uh, do a formal trail along there, um, it's already used, but there are sections of it, it's not paved at all and it gets really muddy. Um, in poor weather, so it is definitely not remotely AD accessible, it is not bikeable, um. There there were, there was support for trying to do some trail improvements, including getting. Documented access to it, and we just didn't get that grant. But we can start. Getting the documented access to it. Without needing, without needing uh, funding, we just can't move ahead with things like property acquisition or trail improvements without funding.
So back to a point you made, Kirsten, earlier, when we're seeking permission. When the solicitor is seeking permission, it may be helpful to have a map that they. Provide to these agencies to say, this is what we'd like permission to access. So is that something that council ba- based on? Based on our motion from tonight, council would. Take the next steps and direct the engineer to prepare such. Maps for the solicitor's use.
Eric, since you created this Google map, do you think you could save a an image of that and we can send that to council? With the request? As a visual aid.
For for sure, here, let me do two things, though. Here, let me, because I just. Huh, here's my made up numbers, um.
While Eric does that, the other thing is, we we probably already have it, because again, this was looked at in the Parks Plan.
Yeah.
Done last year, that's going forward for adoption at the February council meeting, so these are, they should already be identified in that.
Do you, I haven't seen, uh, because it's not formally adopted, I haven't seen that, I'm sure I have it stored somewhere on a drive that I've never looked at. So I don't know if one, if you can send that to me, Kirsten, the uh, the Parks Plan. And that was done by Pashak, is that right?
It was done by, um. EPD.
Oh, EPD, okay, um, I know Andrew, was Andrew Schwartz?
Mm-hmm, yeah, he was the project lead.
Then I can contact him, because I, because he probably has the raw data on who who has, who owns all the properties along there.
It, so those, he he might not have that, those properties were not officially in the scope.
Okay.
The the scope they looked at were all of the borough owned properties.
Okay.
But those trails came up as high priority issues amongst the community, and so they were included, they were identified. Through that process. Um, as. Future growth opportunities and trails that the community wanted to see expanded. And they were identified in the plan. Um, it was funded by D C E D and only covered the borough owned properties, and so EPD was careful to focus on the properties. That were allowable per the scope. But they did address towards the end of the plan that there were community, there is community support and desire to also. Expand into these additional trail systems, and there are these parcels that the borough does not own, but would like to. Would like to seek additional funding to. Establish a trail network.
I just.
Um, I can look for that for you, I was looking for it the other day, because I need to share it with, um. Our consultants doing the Linden. Property feasibility study as well. Um, but it's just been a while, so I have to dig it out, it was quite buried in my email and haven't found it yet. I mean, it's on the council One Drive.
Okay, oh, okay.
Find it there and then locate it, I was looking for it earlier today.
So I think this is public, but I'll just make sure that the link is in the notes right now, too. There you go. So I put the link to this map on the, the meeting minutes, okay?
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
And the the picture that I dropped in the meeting minutes is just me drawing like. What that means, so the trolley trail can come down to the new parking lot, the school, and you can connect to this. You you can see where the the whole loop would be, but like I said, it's a moot point without that connector, you know, and if we're not allowed to. I mean, I can't imagine we're not allowed to, but. Seems. Seems. Like an act of war if we say we can use someone else's land without their permission. That's it.
Okay, so do we have the agenda backup?
I'm trying to do that right now, I have to get back to. Where it is.
Well, I think that's progress, we've had all these talks about official maps and what did. Phil used to call it, had some other name for it, too, gone through conversations, trying to figure out what he wanted, what he was talking about and what. Eric wanted, what he was talking about, and we've gotten to a clear request for. A specific outcome to get written approval to those properties and. No other. No specific map.
Progress.
To be created out of it, just the written approvals are what what we're asking for.
Correct. With those, we'll have a map, or we'll have the foundation to make a map.
Okay, well, the next item then was the Linden Property Feasibility Study. I wanted to give updates on that, there was a kickoff a few weeks ago, we have a consultant lined up for that. Um, Fourth Economy is going to be doing a feasibility study on the Linden Property. Um, Jim actually attended that kickoff meeting, so that was nice, it was the same night. That, um, he was officially announced as our new borough manager. So he hadn't taken the role yet, but he did come and attend the council meeting, and he attended the kickoff meeting that happened earlier. That day with the, um, Fourth Economy Consultant. Um, so that went well, and. The, there were several school districts, um, school board and school district representatives there as well, the president of the school board. And the, um, superintendent, we're both there. Um. There's no, there's no community engagement involved in that scope, it's a fairly streamlined scope. Um, but they're looking at, they did a site tour with Doug earlier in. January, they did a kickoff meeting with myself and Vince as representative from council. Um, Mayor Perry was in attendance, um, our interim manager. Um, Doug Sample was in attendance, and Jim Price was in attendance as the new borough manager being announced as a new hire that evening. Um. I don't know how much else there is to really update on that, they're doing a feasibility study, we talked about it in in December as well, what that is going to include, and there's no. There's no community input and there's no planning commission input on that, but they are. Um, they will be looking at. Our comprehensive plan, they've already looked at, they'll be looking at our current zoning, which they've already been looked at, they've been. Uh, briefed on the ongoing zoning update and some of the concerns around that site. Um, they have been briefed on the various different. Um, ideas that have been expressed by community members, as well as. The various different points of opposition that we've heard, ideas that people don't like. They've been given the. conceptual designs that the school board received from the bidder that they had. So they've seen the, the one proposal that's on the table. I will share with them the the plan that was put together by some community residents that was shared with the planning commission back in 2020. And then they'll be doing a, they'll be doing feasibility study, which is, is really more on their end kind of desktop research. They'll be doing a market study and looking at various different potential uses on that site and putting together a report for us on what the economic impact would be of several different use scenarios. And they have a couple of months to do that. So we should have a report back in sometime in spring. And then at that point, I think it would be a good idea to have some kind of planning commission involvement in that. Once it comes out, we could perhaps make that the focus of another workshop. We did a Linden property workshop a few years ago. Or there was some discussion, just a casual discussion between myself and Vince about how this might be a good, a good thing to do an in-person event around to have people down to the community center and planning commission members in attendance and hopefully maybe council members in attendance to talk about the findings and outcomes of that and get some community ideas for what we do next. But that would all be next step. That's not part of what the consultant is doing for us. That's more what we might want to do once we get their report. So questions, discussion, ideas, anybody have anything on that?
I think having, no, having some, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, I think having some sort of planning commission involvement makes sense and would be great since we did a lot on this topic before.
Yeah, and I think how we design the whatever outreach or whatever conversation we have, if we do something public, shouldn't wait to see what the results of their study are because it might decide where we do it, how we do it, you know, that kind of thing.
Is that what you meant, Lydia? Like planning commission involvement, once there is a report with rolling it out to the community?
Mm hmm. Yep.
So we can maybe keep that in our minds, but you know, figure out what exactly it should be when we get closer to having that report. This little, it'll probably be delivered in March or early April.
When, when you mentioned the community member ideas, you're talking about the the whole presentation that was given to us at a planning commission meeting.
The presentation, yeah, that was put together by Greg and James.
Right, okay.
So anything else on that topic?
I'm just so happy to hear it.
Just kind of a general update since again, it doesn't have any kind of community involvement or planning commission involvement, but it, it did. It's just a status update. It, it had a kickoff. And then the consultant is pretty much tasked with doing some market research and putting that into a report for us.
Awesome.
So we should be able to see those results and then talk about what we would like our next steps to be later this spring. And then I kept these other things on the agenda. I know we've had, a lot of us have not been able to make every planning commission meeting over the last few months. So we've been talking about these kind of on and off with whoever's able to be here. The first one is that Allegheny County and City of Pittsburgh Digital Equity Plan. Eric, at our December meeting, you had taken on an action item. I didn't know if you wanted to address this one at all.
Note, starting a ideation note stock.
And can reiterate what we, what we talked about in our notes from December. This is ongoing and Crafton can participate through our membership and connect. Connect is one of the stakeholders. We can share what our needs are. It may not make it into their final plan, and I have no idea where they're at with their plan. I know they were hoping to have something this spring. But if we can certainly make sure that we express what we would like included and try to get that included. That countywide digital equity plan will be used to position this area to get funding that'll be allocated down through the state later this year. So if we would like to put into writing what our, what our requests are, what our needs would be for better digital equity service to our residents, some of the things we talked about in December, for example, are that our library is very small and they do have computers and they do have hotspots that they make available, but there are only a few that are available to rent and the library has limited hours. So anybody who does not have a computer of their own or a device to use, there, there are, there's nowhere else to go and there's no way to, to get access to one outside of the library's hours. We'd also talked a little bit about how we have a lot of seniors who have limited access to the internet or to a computer or knowledge on how to use it. So there might be a might be a need for more digital literacy support or courses or training. And that's kind of where we left off in December. Eric, I don't know if you wanted to say anything on this point, or if this is one that we continue to work on through next month.
No, I think, I think my, my question to the group is, wha- what what do you envision? How do we know what our need is?
I don't, I think this is why we put down what we want to be considered and submit it to them. We're not doing this plan, but we can tell them what we want them to be looking at.
I'm, I'm
I think Eric's.
No trouble conflating, go ahead.
Are, are you getting at like, do we want to conduct a survey to see what people think the needs are more than just the five of us?
Yeah, yeah. You know, how do I trip with that survey? Maybe, maybe a survey monkey? Sorry. I mean.
I know, this is the, this is sort of the problem, right? Because you'd be catching people that already can access technology in responding to a survey like that.
Right, that's, yeah, that's the, the irony of it all. So how, how do we know what we need? Right? How, how will we know? Well, like anything else, how do we know to ask in a way so that we get what we need? There's a second half of that, right? So how do we say that with, hey, we have a Title I school with forty percent poverty in it, in our community. We have over sixty percent of our residents are over the age of sixty-five. Our median income is, you know, eighteen percent below the county average. And, you know, we really would like to have our library to have more, you know, hotspot access. And that would be a great place to invest funds into, you know, our, our niche of the Carnegie Library, right? But everything I just said was made up. Well, not everything, but, right? Is, is that along the lines of what we want to be able to say, though? Right? You want to ask something informed?
I think that at this point, we have to keep it fairly high level. We don't have any funding or capacity to do some kind of, you know, detailed planning study or, or we're surveying outreach. And this has been on our agenda since October. They're going to be finishing up that plan shortly. So if we, we can either send them a, you know, a letter from the planning commission identifying areas that we know we would like considered for, for Crafton without putting specific quantities to it, or we can or we won't be, we won't be included in this. And that will be it. I, I don't think that many of the municipalities are included in this. From everyone else I've talked to, no one's even aware of it.
Right, so.
We can say something or we can say nothing, but whatever we say is not going to be incredibly detailed. We can tell them what we would like to be considered and come this year, the, the state of Pennsylvania will be doing a statewide digital equity plan. And the first place they will look in Allegheny County is to see what did Allegheny County already flag as what, what their needs are.
Yeah, and we could, we could, if we don't have any distinct requests at this point, I'm going to the connect meeting on Thursday. And I know that their goal on the Thursday meeting is to talk about their plans for the year and to really kind of figure out where they're going. So I can give more information about, hopefully there'll be some kind of update on this. And if there's not, I can ask.
Pretty sure there's not. I had attended their meeting and their annual legislative event in October and in October and given a, given a bit of a speech to ask that connect formally represent the member municipalities in this plan. And I haven't really heard anything about it since. There, there was a little discussion about connect putting out a survey for all of the member municipalities and that did not happen.
So.
But do we want to get a bulleted list to Jim so he can relay this information on Thursday?
I'm not, I'll just, I'm not sure that Thursday is the appropriate time to convey a list. I might just send it to them if, because I don't, I think this is going to be a broader overall discussion is my guess, and we're not going to get into details on any of these specific things. Is my, because I think they're probably talking about this. If they are talking about it actively, they're talking about it on one of their committee. This is the, kind of like the overall steering commit, committee of the, of connect, so. But I'm happy to take the list. I'm not sure it'll be appropriate to share it or not.
Okay.
So Eric, had you started one?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm coming to, to the conclusion that I arrived at and, and I'm I am of the opinion that if we ask for anything, it's the two guiding principles that I, that I thought about here are, you know, how do we, how do we know what we need, right? And I'll tell you that this group is not equipped to know what we need. I work on digital equity plans. I have, I have some idea of, of what goes into it and we're not there. But I will tell you that the state of Pennsylvania, the IU and the school district is supposed to be present at the table and figuring that out from the lens of kids. So when I think about the county and what the county can do, you know, it's the second half of the, the guiding idea, which is how do we ask for something that we think we might be able to get, right? So if the school is going to take care of young people, the only real thing that I think is worth debating in terms of how do we get an ask would be something for our older population. Right? Because those are the, those are the areas that are underrepresented. You know, offensive, you're twenty-five, but figure out your own internet. And if not, well, there's certain programs as a county that we can put out there as a safety net to help you. But as far as our vulnerable populations that aren't being looked after mindfully without our involvement, I'm saying the school district probably has the kiddos covered. But that leaves who's advocating for all those people in the two towers, all those people who live alone, all those people who are in Crafton who make up a significant portion of the, what is it, six hundred out of the six thousand people, one in ten people are over sixty, seventy-five years old in this town. So who's asking for them? So I would think that if we did anything as a planning commission, not that kids are important, not that twenty-five years aren't important, but I would think it would be a singular ask to say that we hope that the area of aging or some, something else, the elderly population receives resources they need to engage our elderly population in digital citizenry.
Yeah, and I, too, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's good. And I also can connect with Age Friendly Pittsburgh to discuss this as well. Age Friendly Pittsburgh works on this exact issues. Because I do have another concern about this particular topic, and that is that it's really not in the purview of the planning commission. It's kind of tangential to what a planning commission typically is responsible for from an official capacity. So I just want to be careful that we're also not, you know, because I, Eric, I know you have, I know Kirsten, you're, I think you work on digital stuff at Baker, and I know Eric, you sound like you also do work in this space. But I just want to be careful that, you know, from an official standpoint, I'm not sure the planning commission is the people they should be really taking this and running with it. But I don't, I don't know that there is a commission necessarily at a municipality that, that at least that it, it's separate, the equal opportunity board that we have, but just want to, and I know it hasn't been populated and they're considering getting rid of it, but just want to throw that out there.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to get my hand slapped. You know what I mean? If we're the wrong, wrong people to send it upstream, they can just as easily delete, throw the letter away as opposed to not getting one.
Yeah, and I'm still following. About that because we're not, we're not officially tasked with anything here. We just, we are a connect community. And if we would like to share any of our thoughts, we can share them. And I think that's, I put it on our planning commission agenda because no one else is talking about it. And I thought I would like it shared with, with people who are interested in these things. And if we don't want to submit anything to connect, we don't want to share any thoughts with them on how they, how we would like them to be representing us in this, in this process that they're part of. We don't have to. I find it disappointing that we're not participating in any way, but I also find it a little disappointing that connect has not taken a, any kind of stronger position in making sure that municipalities have a way to engage with this.
And, and I still plan on voicing, I mean, I'll still pay attention and make sure that we have represented and making sure that we're representing equity and that we're talking about the things, Eric, that you just talked about. I can absolutely do that in a more casual way. I was just talking about like from a, from a perspective of the, you know, where the planning commission, you know, should be focused officially, but yeah.
There. I injected it into the note stock as my, my commentary and you guys have been flaming me for it later, but it just seems like, you know, I know, I, I, I see every day how many resources are going into the kiddo side of that. And you're absolutely right that everyone else is silent because they're, well, there hasn't been a committee. There isn't a place, there isn't a place for this to come from or a mechanism for it. And what happens is it becomes an overthought once again. And rather than putting some RF, you know, relays on top of, you know, Foster Plaza for them to suckle off, you know, school district internet after three PM, like what is done in other communities that we know nothing about in Carlington School District. That would be free wifi that would be distributed at least into that portion of seniors in our town, right? So there's things that can be done. It costs money to put up those relays. And, you know, connect, if they're interested in looking into this, there's all sorts of great ideas that are being accomplished up and all around the country. So why not here? So I would just say that the, the area of vulnerability that we're not as a community mindful of and planning for is our elderly one in terms of they're vulnerable, they have a need to be digital citizens. And there really is no good means to be there. And that's exactly what this funding should be useful.
And connect is not leading this. And I'm getting, you know, a little tired here of talking about this for the third meeting and trying to share information that no one's listening to. So I'm just going to wrap up here. We can move on to the next item. You guys aren't interested in this, we'll move on. But had they interacted more with stakeholders, what they would have done, what they, what I wish they would have done is come to each municipality and said, hey, we want to hear what some of your issues and concerns are. So my intent in putting this on our agenda was to say, well, they haven't asked us, but let's put them together anyways and send them. You don't want to do that? Fine, let's move on. Vehicle electrification, I would like some dinner tonight. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about vehicle electrification or any other initiatives that nobody else wants to work on?
Here, so I just put that on.
No, but just, just go ahead. Okay, I haven't had dinner. Let's wrap up. I'm trying to let you guys.
Anyone second it?
We can postpone the other items.
Okay.
The only thing I had on vehicle electrification is that I, I was able to find some example language and it was part of the November email that Jim, I forwarded. Same email where I explained about the Charters Valley Flood Control Authority. So if you can read through that and just get up to speed with what we've found as examples so far, that might be a good starting point for next meeting to, to bring it back. That might be a good starting point for next meeting to, to bring it back up. And I'd be happy to kind of talk through what I found or share some of the examples I found next meeting or. We're in March if, um. If Zone Co ends up coming to February's. But, um, yeah, let's motion. Let's, let's postpone.
Their minutes to review because I don't believe that those were prepared.
The December meeting minutes I did, I was able to. Uh, format last evening, but.
Go ahead and share those because again, I, I can't, I haven't.
Why don't we, I don't think it's a major rush. Why don't we postpone it and then Vince and Matt would be available next meeting to review it with us? Eric, are you okay with that?
Yeah, fine with it.
We'll postpone vehicle electrification. And review of December minutes and there's no citizen comments because none are on. So Eric, you had a motion to adjourn at eight seventeen?
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, have a good evening.
You too.